Joining us tonight, um, our, our, um, A B R I J S student rep Rick Mazunder is here to give us an update tonight.
Hello, everyone. Um, so today I would like to talk about the new schedule and the new advisory and how it affects us high school students. So I'm just gonna start my thing right now. So when it comes to how the new advisory affects the students, there are three different ways it affects us. It affects us in school, it affects us when we work remotely, and how it affects our half day Wednesdays. First, how it affects us when we're in school. So the short end class periods, the have no effect on student and the smaller passing time really has no difference. Cause even though it's a two minute difference, when you travel across the school, it doesn't really make that much of a difference when you're just trying to travel from class to class. So that really hasn't made that much of a difference. Based on that, the extended advisory also has not made much of a difference to us students. It took away free student, free periods from students who had them before. However, since most teachers and, uh, advisors don't really know what to do during these free periods, our advisory has pretty much just become another free period in which a teacher gives us the option to do a Kahoot or play a game online with them, but we're not really forced to do anything. So it's pretty similar to last year advisories. Second, with the students working remotely. Based on my peers and I, we found that this really hasn't been beneficial because the teachers really just have to contact us and come up with make work and filler chat just to fill up the time. And it also interrupts people who have like busy, busy sleep schedules and need to rejuvenate over these asynchronous days. And also interrupts people who have other commitments during these asynchronous days. So how it affects students working remotely is pretty negative. Uh, finally, how it affects us on half days. So even though it increases the time of the half day, I would think it's, me and my peers think it's actually less productive because there are less breaks, less time for breaks in between classes and we have to end up looking at the screens longer. And this causes both eye strain for the students and the teachers. So even though there's more time input into place because of the eye strain and like just looking at the screen all day, we get tired quicker and we're less productive. And this is not only even for the students. The teachers also get in, um, influenced by this. So the takeaway for this is that even though school time has to be extended to fulfill state requirements, we understand that. Maybe find a way in doing that in which we don't have to look at the screen more and find other ways besides assigning this like filler work and make work just to meet with our teachers. Like if we have a more productive use of this time to increase to the state requirements, then it'll probably end up benefiting us more other than just creating extra time. Hopefully that got my message across, um. Any questions?
It did, Rick. I'm, I'm curious, um, because I have noticed some of the same things that you are noting with my own high school student. But I'm curious if you have creative thoughts about how to use that time besides, especially the advisory time on, on asynchronous days.
I would recommend like a study period because that's something that worked really well last year. Like I remember a study period gave us the freedom to do what we wanted, but at the same time, it wasn't like getting teachers to like force upon make work on us. Like, yeah, that's just something I would think like would be really beneficial. So instead of looking, looking at the screen, like so on the half days, instead of just sitting in front of the screen all day, maybe you can have your own in, but like your screen break, just doing like other work, like reading or just, I don't know, like a study period on your own. In that way, you're still engaging with school activities, but you're not looking at the screen all day.
So unfortunately, the state requirement required us to have more synchronous teacher time, which
Oh, so it's it.
which would not be fulfilled by, uh, what I think would be tho- those, I agree with you. I mean, I, I think that those are better uses of some students' time for sure. Um, but something to think about and it is interesting and good for us to, to get the feedback as to how it's actually going, especially for those of us that don't have high school students, um, which is quite a few of us. So, thank you. Did anyone else have a question for Rick? Nora?
It's not really a question, but I just appreciate you sharing with us, um, just how exhausting it can be to keep your eyes on the screen all day. And I think it's something that has started to feel normal for us, but it's a good reminder that it's really hard, um, to do that. And it's important to have those healthy breaks. So thank you for just giving us that reminder at this point and doing it almost for a year. How much students, students need that.
And for taking extra time to be on a screen to join us tonight. So appreciate it on top of everything else that you share with us. Thank you so much.
Bye.
Bye. All right. So if members of the public who registered would like to speak at this time, would they please raise their hand in, um, so that we, you, uh, we can recognize you for three minutes each. Looks like we've got one ticker. You're muted.
Uh, you can speak. I couldn't because I muted myself, but you can.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Scott Smires from Central Street. On January seventh, uh, the chair read a statement that concluded with a, uh, remark about how a s- citizen who had previously written a popular letter supportive of saving the colonial had changed their mind. And, um, that that was an, an important, uh, message at that time. And the conclusion of that statement said, and I hope that this is the last that we have to say about the colonial. Uh, and two weeks later on the twenty first, under the new guidelines of public participation, which I just learned, you have some other changes as well. That same person who wrote that letter, which was Elliot Donald, had submitted a, a follow-up explaining that that, uh, that it was, uh, slightly different once he had had a chance to read the comment letters associated with the colonial. But at that, during that meeting, the letter was read by one of the school committee members and the time limit was cut off. So let me read the end of it for you since, since the public did not get to hear it. It said, "I had prematurely convicted the town for a bigoted tone that on further examination generally wasn't there. I felt chagrined by my hastily written emails inclusion in the school committee's statement. I was disturbed that my words had been used to support the colonial's retirement, but more disturbed that they had been used to enforce the idea that we should hear the last of the colonial." I think it's important for everybody to understand that letter should not, that reading of that letter should not have been cut off. And it looks like, now we can't prove this, but that was done deliberately. Obviously you have the letters ahead of time. You knew the conclusion was in, you knew the conclusion was in conflict with the main point of your formal statements two weeks beforehand. You deliberately left them off of the public comment period. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak? Um, Adam, I know that we have something to read and, um, Nora, I, you may read your thing at the end of public comment. I'm just gonna note that there was no intention behind cutting off any letter that every single, um, piece of information that was read by Adam the other, that night that you're referring to was cut off at three minutes. And that letter was not the only one. So we afforded the same amount of time to every participant in the same way that we would have afforded that time as we did tonight. So three minutes it is. And, um, to assume or imply that that was in any way intentional beyond the procedures that we have in place is a little insulting. Um, Adam, why don't you read the, uh, comment that came in and then, and then Nora?
Sure. Uh, "To the members of the Acton and Boxborough School Committee, we wish to voice our appreciation for the time and hard work you give to the towns of Acton and Boxborough, especially to our children. In a special way, we wish to recognize Kira and Evelyn, who have shown grace and integrity in the face of hate and harassment. Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. teaches us that darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that. Thank you for being the face of light and love during this challenging time in our towns. With gratitude, the Social Justice Task Force of the Acton Congregational Church."
Thank you. Nora, you also. You're muted. I mute yourself first.
Thank you. I just wanted to, um, read a statement that I prepared, um, some response to some of the, the letters that we've received. With regard to the matter of the school mascot, the decision that the school committee made in October of 2020 to retire the colonial as the high school mascot was made unanimously as a matter under our purview and as part of our work to build a climate and culture that prioritizes student needs and interests above all else. We will continue our work to support the educational welfare and wellbeing of all students and actively work to create an anti-racist community that respects and uplifts all of our students. We recognize the increasing diversity of our community and we thank all who reached out in support of our decision and the important work that we have in front of us. To those who disagree with our decision, we acknowledge your respectful input and understand that while some people are disappointed and perhaps even angry, we now need to turn our attention to matters, um, before us. We ask for your continued support for our students and the incredible challenges they faced over the last year and will continue to face as we attempt to return our children to their classrooms."
Thank you, Nora. Um, and that brings us to you, Peter.
All right. Well, I know you're all excited to hear my second update of the week and I'm sure that you've been waiting for this, uh, all the way since Monday. I have one announcement that I'd like to make and I am so pleased to announce to all of our Acton and Boxborough community that Ms. Joni Dean has accepted my offer to become the next principal of the Acton Boxborough Regional High School effective July first, 2021. Ms. Dean brings a diverse set of experiences and skills to the position. Ms. Dean currently serves as the prep school director, which is the equivalent of the upper school principal for the Columbia, Columbia Grammar and Preparatory School in New York City, New York. In her 21 years at Columbia Prep, she also served as the school as a math teacher and department leader for many years, dean of academics and as the assistant director of the prep school. Prior to joining the faculty at Columbia Grammar and Preparatory School, Ms. Dean taught for two years at a public school in Brooklyn, New York and as a Peace Corps volunteer in Cameroon, Africa. Ms. Dean holds a Bachelor of Science in Chemical Engineering from the University of Texas at Austin, Masters of Arts in Mathematical Education from Teachers College at Columbia University, and, uh, Masters of Education in Leadership for Educational Change from Bank Street College of Education. Ms. Dean was selected as the outstanding candidate from a pool of thirty-eight applicants, twenty-two of whom had prior or current experience as a school principal. Last week, Ms. Dean visited our district as one of the three finalists for the position and met with groups of students, faculty, as well as student, school, and district leaders. This week, Ms. Dean participated in a family and community forum. In the feedback we received from stakeholders, Ms. Dean was viewed as a highly favorable candidate by many of the more than two hundred thirty pieces of feedback we received during the finalist round. I would like to thank Deputy Superintendent Marie Alteri and all of the members of our search committee for their time, energy, and wisdom throughout the process. I would also like to thank students, faculty, staff, and families who attended our finalist meetings and provided me with feedback on this important decision. Ms. Dean will officially begin her position on July first, 2021. I am thrilled to be able to welcome Ms. Joni Dean to the A B community and believe she will serve as an outstanding leader of our high school for years to come.
Thanks, Peter. All right. Um, tonight we have one presentation, um, from the Junior High Social Action Club. They'd like to present a statement that was signed by three hundred eighty students to the committee. Uh, we did not include their names on the post of letter due to student privacy. Um, I want to welcome two students, although I want to get clarification on the pronunciation of one person's name because I do not want to pronounce it improperly. So Sarah Karp is here with us and then, um, do you want to bring them into the meeting, Peter?
Yep.
Um, and I will ask the other student how to best pronounce her name. Actually, okay. All right. Um, so Sarah's here and, um, I don't want to mispronounce your name. Could you give me some guidance?
I'm sure. It's Sneha Iyer.
Sneha, thank you. Sneha Iyer. Welcome to the two of you. Um, the floor is yours.
Hi, um, so we're Sneha and Sarah. And we are two eighth graders and part of the RJ Gray Social Action Club. And we're here to present to you a letter as, um, was previously stated, um, that was signed by three hundred and eighty students regarding the two racist attacks, um, at the school committee meetings. And, um, I'll just say a quick thing about sort of the reasoning for us writing this letter. We decided to write the letter, um, after we sort of saw the conversation around these incidents and around racism in our community just kind of waning. And we sort of felt like people were saying, okay, it's been a few weeks, you know, let's move on, like we're done here. And so we wrote this just to say that we are not done, that we as students feel that, uh, our community really needs to not be done with this. So Sneha, you can take it away.
Fine. Um, this is the letter. We, oh, we, the undersigned students of RJ Gray Junior High School, denounce the hateful acts that occurred at the school committee meetings on December seventeenth and January seventh. These acts of racist abuse are unacceptable in every way.
Hmm, there we go. Sorry.
Sorry. To Ms. Cook and Ms. Abaya Isa, we want to say this. We are immensely grateful for your, for your presence on our school committee. We, we feel incredibly privileged to have diverse voices like yours representing us. We admire your strength and courage. To the rest of our community, we would like to say this. We as a community have much work to do. Acton and Boxborough are not free of racism. These acts were not isolated incidents. They are symptoms of a much bigger problem. Regardless of who the perpetrator was, we do not get to walk away from these events and forget about them. To those in our community who believe that racism does not exist, we are asking you to reflect on these recent incidents and past events of racism in our community. As time passes and we get further away from when these acts were committed, we have a choice to make. We can either turn a blind eye and dismiss these a- events as being in our past. Or we can take this as an opportunity to strengthen our community. We urge you to do the latter. We are calling on everyone to learn from this, grow from this, and help our community heal from this.
Thank you, girls, for, for sharing that. That's, um, incredibly impressive that you were only in eighth grade. I think that, that, that this bodes well for us, um, as, as a town, that we have such involved students who are so eloquent in their presentation, um, you know, working their way through the school system. John, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you to Sarah and Sneha for bringing their diverse voices, um, to our community and to sort of emphasize both that we're coming up on Valentine's Day weekend and that we are not only against hate, but we have the objective of building a loving community. I've, I've changed my background because I think people were tired of the old one anyway.
I have no words. Okay. No words. Does anyone else have something that they wanted to ask Ginny or share? Yes, I wanted to thank them for taking the time and for the work they're doing. It's so super impressive. Um, just thank you so much and thank you for being here. Kira?
Um, as ever, I, I, I have said it so many times and, and I'll say it again and I, I will say it to both of you. First of all, I will just say thank you. Um, it just, it means the whole wide world to me and I will try my best not to cry. I, it just, um, the students of A B schools are second to none. You are just so poised and strong and powerful. And when you speak, I just want you to know how much we listen. Um, it is, it's my deepest honor to serve you. I am so grateful for your time and for your care, uh, and for your leadership. Thank you so much.
Evelyn?
Yeah, I echo, um, Kira's sentiments about this. And, um, wanted to thank you both for whatever you, you're doing and, and I received an email from Sarah's, um, that got forwarded to me from Sarah's, um, rabbi. And it was a beautiful, beautiful email and, um, testament to both of you, Sarah and Sneha. It said, "Shalom. Oh my goodness. I am so blown away to receive this amazing letter in my inbox. I wanted to reach out to you to know how impressed, touched, and moved I am by your efforts and by your pursuit of justice in this world. Truly, you are living embodiment of the Torah. As you know, Torah teaches us justice. Justice you shall pursue. And the Torah that leads us to action is the most powerful of all. Fabulous and what a beautiful gift to the entire community. And I echo those sentiments. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Sneha, for all you're doing for A B."
All right. Thank you, girls, for coming tonight to present. It's a big deal to get onto a, a Zoom call where there's lots and lots of adults watching. And you were incredibly poised and, and your message is incredibly welcome. So thank you. Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us. And that of the other three hundred and eighty students who signed, um, the letter. We're incredibly grateful.
Thank you so much for having us. We're very grateful to present to you all.
Yes, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you both. That was awesome and you were absolute credit to your school.
I'm sure we'll continue to hear great things from you. So thanks for joining us tonight. All right. So in ongoing business, um, we, we don't actually have much of a consent agenda because the approval of the meeting minutes is going to wait until the next meeting. So we have a recommendation to approve donations to the Student Assistance Fund. Peter, did you want to, I don't, is, is there anything to say other than, sorry?
There is not.
Sometimes I'm not sure and your name is next to it, but all the words are there. So I just wanted to be sure.
No, no, this is, um, it, it says outlined in your packet. I'm just trying to pull it up and, and switch between multiple screens here.
Right. Well, in your packet, it says move to approve the consent agenda. So all we need is a motion to approve. Sixteen hundred fifty dollars in donations received for the Student Assistance Fund.
Move to approve with gratitude.
Second with gratitude.
All right. And we'll vote. Kira?
Yes, with gratitude.
Ginny?
Yes.
Uh, Angie?
Yes.
Yevan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes, with gratitude.
And myself with gratitude. Thank you. Yes, with gratitude.
I will just say that this is extraordinarily timely, that we, you know, are getting these donations to our Student Assistance Fund. Dawn and, you know, some of our, our staff and community over in Boxborough, you may have heard that there was a major house fire over in Boxborough that did impact some of our students. Um, and we were actually able to tap into this fund, uh, to be able to help them. And it's just a nice way, you know, because sometimes students' needs exceed what a school budget is designed for. Um, and we can't, you know, use school budget funds necessarily for, for purposes like this. But, uh, to be able to have this fund, you know, is really wonderful that, that people were so generous to be able to donate and we're then able to use that money to provide assistance to our families and students in need.
I just wanted to point out also that, um, that two of the individuals who contributed, one was a kindergartner and one was a third grader who took some of their own savings to, um, I'm gonna get teary, Kira, um, who took some of their own savings to, um, contribute to kids who are needier than they are. So, um, thank you both. I just sent you some mail today, so.
And, and as noted, it's incredibly timely because it's not often that we have, you know, a tragedy that impacts our students in a way, um, that is as awful as, as the fire last night, which displaced, uh, I think twenty-four families. So, um, and, and thirty individuals. So, um, it was incredibly timely. All right. Um, okay. Pandemic school planning update and next steps.
All right. All right. So, you know, um, I'd say a good evening, but you've already heard me talk several times. So I don't think we need to do good evening again. Um, I'll be, you know, talking for a good portion of this. Dawn's gonna jump in on some of the slides, uh, that she's been working on, particularly around some of the health-related, uh, considerations we need to make. The goal of this presentation, um, is really to help, um, start a conversation about a, a return to school. You know, we need to talk a little bit about, you know, as a reminder of our current mitigation strategies, but also some future planned mitigation strategies. Uh, we have solicited stakeholder feedback to inform initial planning in the form of, um, family thoughts around a return to school as well as, uh, educator and staff thoughts around a return to school. And we, we also want to share with you some of the operational considerations. And then we're looking forward to hearing some of your feedback as initial feedback, um, about things that you think we should have as goals and targets in our planning process. So, um, as a reminder, our current mitigation strategies, because we want to just keep saying this, but we do expect our staff, students to self-screen at home daily with families. We require masks and hand cleaning procedures in all of our schools. We have set a standard of six feet of physical distance in all of our schools. Uh, we have increased sanitizing, disinfecting of classrooms and school spaces on a daily basis. Um, students are grouped into cohorts wherever feasible, certainly at the elementary school, at the junior high and high school, that is more challenging and not always ca- feasible. Uh, we enforce travel restrictions, um, to the best of our ability. We also have designed special medical waiting rooms in every school, um, in building that we have for suspected COVID nineteen cases. We have made sure our ventilation systems use recommended MERV thirteen air filters and we have increased the number of air exchanges so that those are running. Um, and our, you know, filtration in classrooms is at the top of the recommendations published by the Chan School of Public Health. And we, uh, since, over the course of the winter, installed HEPA air purifiers in every classroom and office across the district. And these are not home-sized air purifiers. These are larger commercial HEPA air purifiers designed for thousand-square-foot spaces. So Dawn, do you want to?
Yeah, so we, um, yeah, we, we, in the survey, those of you who took it, um, know that we sort of outlined two mitigation strategies moving forward to add to our existing because we've been looking at moving students back to three feet of distance. And so certainly what are we adding to take the place of that? So one of the things is, is to get our staff vaccinated. Um, really frustrating for lots of folks, um, not just those of us with, um, relatives and loved ones who are over seventy-five trying to get vaccinated still. Um, the state is only allocating a hundred doses per week to our local health departments. So think about that in, in terms of the number of individuals who live in Acton and the number of individuals who live in Boxborough and actually in Boxborough because they're part of a collaborative with the Shova Board of Health over, I think, seventeen communities. That hundred doses goes across those communities. So, um, at this rate, maybe we will graduate by the time our kindergarten, or maybe we'll all get vaccinated by the time our kindergartners graduate, but I'm being facetious. It's a very slow rollout. Folks are very frustrated. Um, we are ready to go. Um, our educators are given priority, um, in phase two, step two, um, which is a later, one of the later stages. And we really have no idea when we can expect a faster rollout, more than a hundred doses a week. Um, we've put in orders in both towns for all of our staff in the district to be vaccinated. Um, and we are ready to go with clinics as soon as we can. So March, April, May, hopefully March. That's, we're gonna stay hopeful for March, but it may be more like April or May. And then certainly you all know, I'm sure, um, that with the two-dose vaccine, assuming that that's what we would be receiving, twenty-eight days after your first dose is when they recommend the second one. And then two weeks later is your peak immunity. So we'd still be looking sort of at six weeks before folks had full quote-unquote immunity, although it is very effective after the first sixty percent or so after the first dose. Next slide. And we don't have a vac- we don't have any timelines for students. Certainly we know the vaccine has been approved for students sixteen and older, which is great. That would take care of a lot of our high schoolers over the summer or in the early fall, um, if that's a possibility for them. We know there's clinical trials underway for children who are twelve and older, but we don't have any timelines on those. And we don't, I don't, we're not aware of any trials underway for children under twelve, um, so can't even offer a timeline on that either. So not really sure what that's going to look like. And later on, um, I think probably shortly, we'll present some additional data about what we're seeing. We're not seeing school spread, um, at all. We're not seeing school spread at all. We have not seen it. So we feel, we feel pretty good about thinking about bringing our kids back. Next, Peter? So the second mitigation strategy is what is known as pooled testing. And also rapid testing, but pooled testing is the big one. So there's different types of COVID tests. The first one is the molecular test. And that's what we, when we go to a clinic somewhere to get a COVID test, that is what, that is what we typically get. The higher, sort of, the better one is the PCR test. And so we would be looking at pooled testing that involves multiple samples. So say, an entire elementary classroom would be pooled into one. We would test all of those swabs at one time using PCR testing, what we wouldn't. We would send it out to do. And then there's one result for a group. So the assumption is that up to 1% of your pools, so however many, let's say at the elementary, there's 10 classrooms, there might be 10 or 11 pools in that elementary. And so we would save a lot of money by doing it this way and by combining those tests. And then it yields one group result. So folks are either at a positive or a negative pooled test sample. And then obviously, there's individual level tests, which is one individual, one result, very, much more costly to do it that way. So we are talking about pooled testing. We're also actually talking about individual tests. So if a pool tests positive, we would be looking at doing individual follow-up testing through sort of a drive-up process that we're still sort of working through. So the goal would be to isolate the folks in the positive pool and then do follow-up testing. So I have two short videos to show you, about, I think, four minutes long total, both of them. And it just sort of gives you an overview of what this would actually look like in our schools and our classrooms. So I thought it was pretty helpful.
I'm going to play this video and please give me a thumbs up if you can hear the sound too. I just want to make sure.
As a superintendent of schools, this has tested all of us in our work and the way we do work, the way we do schools is fundamentally different than how we've ever had.
It's really quiet, Peter. We can hear it, but barely.
One of the hardest years for a lot of teachers and teachers.
What we are doing is being very careful then making sure that we are doing everything we can to keep our schools open and make in-person learning possible for our kids, while also trying to make sure that our adults and students are safe. Testing enables this additional layer of finding the virus before symptomatic students might show up or staff might show up and adding a layer of protection against the spread of schools.
I'm a proponent for, you know, pool testing as much as possible. I think it helps to identify, you know, pockets of outbreak sooner. So certainly, if we can eliminate, you know, opportunities for spread by testing whole groups of people, I think that that's a benefit for us.
So in homeroom, our students, after they get their bags away, jackets away, get out their phone books, they'll sanitize their hands, grab the swab, put it in their nose, four times in each nostril. They will then place the swab in the tube, sanitize their hands, sit back at their desk. We believe that in-person school, giving families that option and giving our children the option of coming into school in person as much as possible is in their best interest.
We can be more proactive about what is happening and what we can control to make sure that everyone's as safe as possible.
Right now, it's just in the pilot and we've had parents actively involved with citizen scientists hoping to figure it out.
I'm hearing from staff who have been in the classroom, that the kids are interested, that they feel, you know, excited about the chance to, you know, participate in research and move something along.
We don't know when the vaccine is going to be available to us. We don't know when our teachers and then when our students will have access. And so we think for the remainder of the school year, having a test in the protocol is critical to our ability to continue to function as a school.
We did just go through a process and that video concentric is actually the provider that we were paired with as a district. So we'd be working with them through a pilot. And this little guy is so cute. We, you know, as we work with the nurses, we sort of have to decide at what age is appropriate for kids to be able to self-swab and then where do we have to help them, probably doing it one-to-one. And so this is showing you that a little second grader can do just fine.
Today, I'm going to show you how to do a nasal swab. Step one. Hands in, tighten your hands. Step two. Take out the nasal swab. Don't touch the side that you are gonna have. Put up your nose. Step three, take the swab and put it in your nose and spin it around three times, four times. Then do the same thing at your other nose. Last step, drop it, boogers down into the cheek.
Anyway, I love that kid. And you know, boogers down, right? That is like a really good, I think that needs to be a new, a new theme for us. My nurses are watching right now and I'm sure they're like, come on, come on, seriously?
It's cheating to show us cute babies. I just want to put that out there. It's cheating. I just want to say that.
I know, he's adorable. The purpose of doing that was just to show that kids actually do feel really good about it and they feel empowered and really young kids can do it. It's not very difficult to do at all because it's the anterior swab, so it's in the front of your nose. It's not the one that's up in your brain. So, so yeah, so kids from very young ages can do it independently and not have to worry about it. So within 48 hours of the lab receiving our shipments, we would get information back about, you know, if we have negative pool, positive pools, all that sort of thing. And then for the folks in the positive pool, we would test each person individually. And so what this does for us, it means that quarantine, anybody in a negative pool, obviously, you're coming right back to school. When we do the antigen test, which is a 15-minute test, as soon as you test negative, you can come back to school. So there's not that sort of weight that would normally be identified. And the other, you know, it's a quarantine that's 24 to 48 hours usually, instead of a much longer period. So it keeps kids in school more so than they've been able to be necessarily, so. And then cost-wise, this is just an estimate right now, that obviously, there's no cost to students or to staff. Desi covers the cost for the first six weeks of the pilot program, so March through the end of April, we're guessing, by the time we're up and running. I'm estimating $37,500 a week would be the cost after the pilot. So if we're looking at eight weeks between May and June or late April and June, about $300,000. And we certainly have SRTU grant monies to cover that. So that's how we would, how we would fund it.
So we're going to just talk a little bit about some of the feedback that we received in our surveys that we sent out. So one of the first questions we asked people was just how comfortable are you right now with the safety protocols that we have in place? And so you could see here, right now, 92% of our families are saying that they're comfortable or better than with the protocols we have in place. So that's a good return rate. And you can see, you know, uncomfortable and then very extremely or very, very low percentiles. We then said, you know, if we left our current safety measures in place, and this is the chart on the left, and we reduce the physical distance to about three feet, how comfortable would you be? And you can see that that changes pretty drastically. And we have about 70%, just under 70% of families saying they'd be comfortable with that. But about 31% saying they're uncomfortable with that to some degree. We asked families also if we returned students in school and just reduced the distance but kept our other current safety practices in place, would you be likely to either return to the four-day program, kind of full in-person, or would you be likely to want to go fully remote? And about 378 people said that they wanted to go fully remote. Later in a slide, I'll share with you, we got about a 50% response rate. So I, you know, I don't actually know quite how to extrapolate that number. If, you know, the other 50% who didn't respond felt similarly, then we'd be looking at about, you know, 700 students that we would have to try and figure something out for. We then asked a series of questions about increasing the safety mitigation strategies we have. So if, the next one was if we added pooled testing to our mitigation strategies, how would that change your comfort level? And about 76, 76% were comfortable and 24 not, compared with 69 and 31. So it increased the bar about 5%, moved up into that comfortable range. But we still received a good number of families, about the same number, who said that they would want to be remote. So we then asked, you know, the question, okay, so if we have pooled testing and our educators get vaccinated, how comfortable are you? And now we get to about 80% of families would be comfortable or more. And about 20% would be uncomfortable to some degree. And the percentages that would return really go up at that point. So about 87.5% said they would return and about 12.5% said they wouldn't. But again, we still have 300 students or slightly more that are uncomfortable returning to some degree. And the question is, what happens with those students if we return fully? These are students, now, these are students who are in our hybrid program now. So they opted for in-person learning in a hybrid model with six feet of distance. And we're seeing about 315 students say that they would be uncomfortable, you know, returning fully. So again, that's, that's an important thing to remember, that this is hybrid students who completed this survey. We then looked just at our elementary families because we have said all along that we need to prioritize our elementary school students for in-person learning. So here's the data for that. So with our current mitigation strategies in place, if we were just to go to three feet of distance, about 70%, 77%, excuse me, were comfortable. And almost 90% indicated they would return. So the actual number of respondents saying they were uncomfortable with that were about 128. That was actually evenly distributed across the grade levels. First grade was slightly lower, but right around the 20 to 25 students per grade range for all of them. So keep that in mind. And again, this is with a 50% response rate. If we added pooled testing, it only notches it up slightly by about 2.5%. But about 90%, you can see again, about 123 students indicating they wouldn't return with the response rate we got. And if we add vaccinations, 86% of families are now comfortable, which is a pretty good number. 91% of our families said they would return and about 107 students were left out. I put the grade distribution here because it started to break down. So again, we have a 50% response rate, but it was 10 students in grade one, 18 students in grade two, 15 in grade three, 23 in grades four and five each, and 18 students in grade six. You know, with the exception of first grade, each one of those is almost a cohort of students. So just, you know, and this, this has to play into our thinking about if we return, how do we navigate this and how do we staff it? We got about 700 responses from staff and educators to the survey. I am purposely putting these all together. I can tell you that whether we look at our certified staff or whether we look at all staff, including non-licensed staff, the results are fairly similar in terms of response. So you can, you can extrapolate, but I didn't want to start breaking our staff into smaller groups for the purpose of this survey. So right now, about 80% of our staff are pretty comfortable with our current safety strategies we have in place. And that includes six feet of distance. And about 20% have some degree of being uncomfortable. We have people who chose to return to work and teach kids, but are still kind of uncomfortable in this environment. And that's important to understand. If we add pooled testing, it improves somewhat. And this again is assuming six feet of distance. If we just returned our students to school with all of the current safety measures in place, and I want to be clear, I'm not recommending this to you, but we wanted to establish a baseline of how our staff and educators felt if we were just to bring the kids back and not change anything. You can see, you know, the level of comfort among adults, about 33% comfortable and about 2/3, you know, really would not be comfortable. If we implemented pooled testing, it improved somewhat. If we get vaccines and pooled testing, we now start to see a shift, where about 70% of staff are pretty comfortable and 30% are uncomfortable to some degree. I thought it would be helpful to look at that initial chart that we asked. The first question we said is if with everything in place at six feet, how do you feel? And if we had pooled testing vaccinations at three feet, how do you feel? And you can kind of see how that compares. So people get nervous as you reduce distance, but it's similar in that regard. Want to talk about planning considerations? I'm going to talk about educational planning considerations first. You know, one thing we would need to do very early in the process is determine kind of a priority for how we want to return students. And we have said that our earliest, youngest students should be our top priority as we return. You know, there's, there's impact on all students not being in school. And I don't want to minimize that. So I just want to say, there is impact on all students by not being in school. However, the ability of our youngest students to function effectively in a remote environment and going back and forth between in-person and remote and asynchronous days in particular, where they don't have a lot of contact, there's a real disproportionate impact on our youngest students. So that, that's our priority. But we want to make sure we, we have consensus that that's our priority. We then will need to determine, probably through surveys like we just did, but with a binding survey, who's planning to return and who's not? Because we need to know what the implications of that are. And we have to figure out for the students who are choosing not to return, what does education look like in that model? I have some wonders about the impact of mid-year or even late-year teacher changes on students. You know, and it's not just the students who would want to stay home likely that would have an impact. Because if we have to staff more teachers in a remote environment, then we have to take them from the hybrid program. We cannot put more students into our remote learning program. They just don't fit, especially, you know, I mean, if it was two students at a grade level for a few weeks, maybe, but even then, I'd be hesitant. So there's some real staffing implications. And again, that, that real impact of late-year teacher changes is something to think about. Implications for remote learning program students. Could there be some remote learning program students that want to return? You know, again, there's teacher changes that we have to consider about the impact on that. But we, we have heard from some remote families that they wish they could have taken the survey too because they would like to return. So is it possible that there might be enough remote families returning and, you know, hybrid students who don't want to return? I, I think that's possible. I think we have heard from some of the remote families that they kind of, when they chose remote, they banked that there'd be greater consistency of education by being fully remote and seeing teachers every day, rather than the hybrid on-day, off-day schedule. So I think if we go more in-person, we will get a portion of our remote families who'd like to come back. So that could actually be a positive impact. But again, we're mixing up, you know, classrooms pretty late in the year. Special education service delivery schedules. This is a major, major consideration for us. It has to be done well and thoughtfully. We have scheduled a lot of our service delivery so that students on in-person days get to remain in their general education classroom for the whole day. And then they might receive what typically would have been pull-out services. They receive those on the offer asynchronous days. That would not work anymore. So we'd have to really think about the timing and how we pull students out of class. And it's just something we need to keep in mind as we're planning. It's not unique to Acton, Boxborough. Every district who's thinking of this has to do the same thing. But it's certainly something to consider mid-year. It, it's not unique to Acton, Boxborough. Every district who's thinking of this has to do the same thing, um, but it's certainly something to consider mid-year. Um, MCAS timing and implications, to be honest, I don't care about it, but um, it's something we need to think about. Um, because we are going to have to administer MCAS as the latest and best information we have. You know, and, eh, you know, as we plan for a return, when I say timing, you know, if we have to implement MCAS in a given week or in a span, we just have to be cognizant of that around the student's return because we're not going to return students just so that they can walk into a classroom and take MCAS for two or three days in a row. That would be ridiculous. Transportation routes need to be rebuilt. Um, right now, we have two different sets of transporta- actually, we have more than two sets of transportation routes because we have some kids operating on the Monday, Thursday schedule, some kids operating on a Tuesday, Friday schedule, other students operating on a four-day schedule. So those would need to get rebuilt um to be effective. Um, we just today uh received new transportation guidance from the Department of Education that lifted all restrictions on transportation. Um, the only restriction is you need to keep the windows open, and if you were in a high-risk community, um, then you could only, for middle and high school students, you could only see two students per seat. Um, right now, we see one student per seat, um, just as for in. We skip every other seat essentially. So um, we would be able to run our buses at full capacity. We are not a high-risk community. The reasoning behind that, really, really good um, fill uh circu- air circulation systems in classrooms typically provide six to eight air exchanges per hour. On a bus with the windows down, there's about forty-seven air exchanges per hour, somewhere in the mid-forties. Um, so I, I think all of the medical experts that at DPH that were guiding Desi signed off on this because they know the air exchanges, they really do not see buses as a threat for students at this point. Um, we need to assess our classroom capacity at three feet. We're currently doing that. Uh, we've been looking at all of our sections that if they were combined, um, we're looking at the total enrollment for classroom sections. We will have some that would be over capacity at three feet of distance, and we're going to need to identify any alternative learning spaces in schools. Whether we would have to set up, you know, cafeterias or gyms or things like that as alternative learning spaces. Some of the larger like music classrooms or art classrooms, we would certainly need to make sure we're taking over and using those to keep kids spaced out at the three feet of distance. Um, a lot of our furnitures, furniture right now is in storage pods um outside of the school, so that would be brought in. Um, we have to, eh, you know, explore a little bit more. We have a lot of classrooms across the district that are using t- or had been using tables instead of individual desks. And so we need to think about what that looks like at three feet and can we put two students at a table and still have them three feet apart, but they can't face each other? So there, there's just some implications that we need to think through for that. We also need to think about any possible uh bargaining implications um with our various unions. That is an important part of this process is to think about what impact a return can have and make sure we're going through the impact bargaining process appropriately. Other things, I said Desi position, it, it's not worded well, um, but we don't know what Desi's position is going to be as educators start getting vaccinated. Um, they could, the Board of Education could determine that they're going to take over more state control of this and require schools to come back. You know, the, I think we're a bit undetermined as to what their status is going to be. Uh, right now, it, it's still a local decision and each city and town is on its own to make these decisions. Um, but I, I think that the Board of Ed is, is really looking at students being out of school as a, as a health concern. We would need to establish a timeline for a return to school. Uh, we eh meet with what we call our medical advisory group, um, which consists of staff from both the Acton Board of Health and also the Shobor Board of Health, which serves Boxborough. We meet with them weekly. Our school physicians are also a part of that meeting. It's typically, um, you know, Don, Marie and I, unless Marie and I get a little bit into an ALG meeting along with Joanne Chadwick, who is our nurse leader. Um, so we meet every week. We talk about all of our protocols, practices, we get feedback from that group. Uh, we have asked, um, some of the members of that group, particularly our school physicians, um, have been so kind to be willing to put together some kind of advisory information to explain kind of the science behind all of this and why it, they believe it's safe um to our educators, to our, you know, families. Uh, because we think education is going to be a key component of any kind of return plan. Um, and we've asked them to look at current data and research that might be out there around this relative safety of three feet of distance. So, you know, have there been any studies or research done that's updated that we could lean on where we see what transmission looks like uh with three feet of space? And then we also obviously need that commitment from families to the in-person model, um, so that we know who we're planning for. So I'm going to go through a few sample timelines. Um, and these are for discussion purposes only. Um, just to get a sense of what this might mean. Option one is what I'm calling a pretty aggressive timeline. Um, and this would give us about five weeks of planning time plus vacation um, to do all of the planning that I just talked about. Um, but that would get us back right at the end of March. Uh, we would plan to implement pool testing around the middle of March um, so that we have several cycles of pooled testing to be able to really, you know, kind of catch and weed out any of those um cases or asymptomatic cases that might be circulating in the school prior to thinking about kids back, bringing kids back. That would give kids about ten and a half weeks of actual school, uh, plus the April vacation week. So that's, you know, a little bit more than a typical quarter of a school year, and our last day of school is on um June fifteenth. This certainly is the longest in-person time. It's slightly over a quarter of the year. Pool testing would be implemented, uh, multiple cycles return uh before the return of students. Uh, educator vaccines, uh, you know, I can't tell you that this would be in place if we looked at this type of a model. Um, I, it's possible, we're going to get that first dose in before then. And, you know, from, from what I'm hearing from our medical experts, the first dose, you know, I, I think it's somewhere in the sixty percent efficacy range. But I believe from a, you know, serious complications or death, i- it almost eliminates it entirely. So, um, you know, one dose is effective, but it's not, it's not a cure and it's not a, a solve-all type of a problem. Um, there's no chance that we would have a second dose of a vaccine within this kind of a timeline. I'm putting it there to show you for discussion purposes, um, but I need to really make sure I, I highlight that, that last piece that this is, is not vaccines. Um, I will tell you, there are some districts planning this type of a timeline overall. Um, and that's certainly something I, I want to hear about, um, but I'm not saying I'm, I'm recommending it. The kind of a moderate timeline would use April vacation as a target. You know, that gives us about nine weeks to do the planning. Um, it gives us just under a quarter of the school year, about seven and a half weeks of school, um, that kids would be able to take advantage of. Pool testing obviously would happen about the same time. We would have that under our belt and have a good amount of experience. Uh, I think it's sounds likely that we would at least have one dose of the vaccine available and possibly the second. We really don't know this information though, and that can change um very rapidly. We hear some experts telling us they expect the vaccine distribution to pick up significantly through March um and accelerate. But um, you know, seeing is believing, I guess is the, the saying. So that, this would be more of a moderate intermediate timeline. And a very conservative timeline would be, you know, uh, really take eleven weeks to plan. So come back for an April vacation, get a few weeks under our belt, really make sure that the educators get that second dose of the vaccine um, before looking at making a, any move. Um, m- my gut is that brings us to May. Um, and then we're looking at maybe a little more than a month of in-person schooling at the end of the year. It certainly would help from a transition standpoint potentially, but it's not going to have that longer-term benefit um of some of the others. But I, I wanted to talk through the implications of all of these different timelines and kind of show it a little bit to to help grasp what that might look like. The other potential is to think of more of a staggered opportunity where maybe it looks different at different grade levels. You know, there are some challenges, particularly at the junior high and high school, that we have not really been able to brainstorm a solution to yet. Uh, that need to still get tackled. So lunch for eighteen hundred students or, or, you know, with our hybrid students, let's say fifteen to sixteen hundred students, what does that look like in, in a large high school? Um, lunch, from a state perspective, we heard from the commissioner today, is really the only time that they're seeing in-school transmission uh happen. Is during those lunchrooms, and it happened in hospitals too. It was hospital break rooms that served as the conduit in that, and that's why they closed the break rooms down. So certainly something to think about. Um, we need to think about, you know, from a high school and junior high perspective, what does it look like when you put that number of students in a building? Similar at McCarthy Town, although the students aren't moving every class period at the elementary level, like they do at junior high and high school. Um, mixing of cohorts at the junior high and high school, out-of-school adherence to safety guidelines. Um, you know, those of you that have high school students know that they tend to have minds of their own. Um, and you don't have the same control over high school kids that you do with elementary school students. So, you know, I think that's something that a- our, we, actually, we've seen it play out over the course of the year. Um, that high school students don't always make the best choices, and it's not their fault. It's their brain isn't at the same place ours is. Um, which could be good in a lot of ways, but maybe not in this decision-making one. And then, you know, high school does have some larger classes that we would need to really take a look at because if we go to three feet, there's only so many kids you can still fit in the room. Um, and there are enough sections at the high school over that, that it has some con- it raises some concerns for us. Um, so that was it. I, I, it's a lot of information, but there's a lot that, that still is out there that we didn't get to share just from a timing perspective. Um, but I would love to hear any questions or discussion around the topic and your thoughts um on where we're at.
That's a year on view.
Nice thing about this is it puts you in order when you're raising, when you actually use the raise hand function, so I can tell like who raised first. All right, Amy, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, um, what is the plan, if there is a plan, um, for kids that are not able to come back full per- are you, do we still have a plan for kids that absolutely have to be remote for specific reasons? Other than that, I think, yeah, get them back to school as fast as possible.
For this year or for next year, Amy?
I'm saying for this year right now. So for this kind of aggressive ti- timeline, are you still going, do you, is there still a plan to make sure that you uh, you continue to, to offer the option of um completely remote learning?
Uh, yeah, under this, we would consider, you know, our remote students, we've considered basically signed on for a year. Unless for some reason they request a change. So, you know, we're not looking at bringing our remote students now back into school. Um, unless for some reason we had capacity and they wanted to.
Okay, but no kind of forced, hey, now we're all going to be in school or, okay.
Yeah, and, and you know, I, I've also heard from some families who are currently hybrid, um, that have medical concerns in their home that it really worries them to decrease the distancing, and so that would might push them to go remote. So it's a tough, tough balancing act.
Thanks for that, thanks.
Sure.
Ginny?
I, I just want to um raise my hand for the most aggressive return to school um, plan that we can manage. I understand there are a lot of moving parts and some things that are unknown. I think that we do need to prioritize our youngest kids and any child with special needs. Absolutely, these are the kids who are losing the most and that I think we all have to be most concerned about. But I have to say, as a mother of two high school students, y- you know, there's a lot of damage being done at, at that level too. It's a different kind of damage, um, for sure than, you know, a seven-year-old or an eight-year-old, but it's, it's also significant and super concerning. So I would support y- you know, prioritization of our youngest learners and any child with special needs, but with the understanding that we need to take an emergent and aggressive position with our older students as well. So, um, you know, I would listen to eh, eh, what further information needs to be determined and what planning needs to be done around all the various issues that are just impossible to, to, you know, work out at this point, but um, really, eh, about in favor of returning to school and um as soon as possible. It's going to be, at the most aggressive, it's going to be over a year since our kids were in buildings every day. Thanks.
Angie?
Yes, um, I also uh support that the uh, there, for the younger kids and especially, I think there really needs to be on the priority to go back. And I want to speak for the seniors. And regardless, uh, which plan, does that mean that all the senior activities at the end of the school year is going to happen normally, including prom? Or the graduation?
I have not talked to Larry about prom. Um, I can't imagine that there's going to be able to be a live dance. Eh, eh, you know, basically, we would set up a situation where we're actually causing the kids to not use appropriate distancing. Um, I don't think we could do that. I do know Larry and I have, have talked. I don't want to, you know, get ahead of him. Uh, we, we would love to try and get to a place where we could hold some type of a live graduation for kids this year. Um, the commissioner talked about that. He said the state will not be putting guidance out for at least another six weeks. Um, because they need to kind of see where things are at. So, you know, we can do all the hoping we want on that, um, and we'd like to get there and want to kind of get a plan that we think could work, but we're going to have to wait for the state.
Okay, thank you. John?
Um, eh, I want to start by, eh, you know, saying that, you know, I'm in complete agreement with what uh Ginny said and Angie said with respect to uh prioritizing the youngest and special needs students. Um, and then I also want to agree, you know, you know, with Ginny, that in terms of the balance of interest, you know, it is rapidly shifting um to the balance of, of, of interest being in a return to school. Having said that, um, you know, everybody knows that I'm a moderate, so I would vote for the moderate scenario. Partly because I think that the um, eh, 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 as people are increasingly vaccinated, you know, the perception that the environment is safer, you know, will improve. And part of this is about, you know, what the risk is, you know, objectively in some kind of scientific metric. And part of this is about people's perception of risk. Uh, and so then the last thing that I think that's important for people to realize in this year in which we've been completely whipsawed, you know, I still can't believe, you know, how we've gone through this peak of infection for anybody who hasn't looked at the numbers to see, you know, both, you know, the dramatic rise through uh December and early into January and the sort of the double peak. You know, and now really the rapid return, you know, to sort of the low levels that, um, you know, I'm expecting within the next month that were present in the fall when, you know, we were starting this whole adventure. Um, you know, my sense of what the actual risk out there is, is that it's going down. But I don't, I don't think people have that feeling just because it's so hard uh to track this dynamic situation. And I think the last thing um that I saw in the last week or so that's relevant to uh perception of risk is that there was a study out of Columbia University that estimated that in Massachusetts, forty-five percent of the population uh may have been infected, which is, you know, an amazing number. So if you couple, you know, whatever the actual number is, a relatively high rate of infection with increasing levels of vaccination, um, the environment really is going to be wildly different two or three months from now. So, um, I, you know, I hope that we try hard uh to communicate that even if nothing else was going on, you know, besides those two things, this is a safer environment.
Kevin?
Yeah, when I see that hundred vaccine number, I just laugh because that's not going to even last an hour. Especially with the new guidance from the state yesterday that, um, anyone that's accompanying a seventy-plus, seventy-five-plus year old could get a vaccine, I think that would go quickly. But what I'm trying to understand, knowing that, um, a lot of kids happy to be asymptomatic and they're walking around probably with COVID and we just don't know it. Once we start testing, I imagine that we're gonna have uncover more positives, right? And so if the kids come in four days a week and they're on site, what is the plan to keep them and they ha- and they test positive, those that test positive? What is our plan to keep them engaged in school whilst they're? What is our plan to keep them engaged in school whilst they're at home quarantining? Because I imagine that we're gonna get, you know, and I'm asking that because this week my kid had been home because her whole hockey team. Has been exposed and it hasn't been easy keeping, keeping her engaged. Um, she's hybrid and. She has, you know, the 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 impersonations have been tough. Um, to keep her engaged, although she's doing her homework. And if we are back four days a week, I just worry about how. I I am all for getting the kids back in school, especially the younger kids. I'm all for that, but I worry for. Um, the older kids, I I even all the kids, how are we gonna keep them engaged if they're home, they test positive and they're home for four days or. Fourteen days or however, however long we're keeping them to quarantine. I'd like to understand the plan a little bit more.
Yep, that's certainly something we'd have to visit and that's a weakness of our plan, to be honest. Um, you know, it's something we haven't been able to crack yet.
Adam?
Thanks, Tessa. Uh, you know, first of all, I want to, uh, thank Peter and the entire administration for for working on this. When you came to us in the summer with the return to school plan, one of the things that you said we were gonna have to do is is be agile and put a. Constantly sort of evolving and improving plan together. And I'm I'm really pleased to see that we're continuing to do that. Um, so thank you for that. Uh, I wanna echo Ginny's comments around the importance of bringing back, um, peo- uh, students as quickly as possible. Um, but my question is around our own capacity, um, knowing that there's a lot going on, um. Just sort of managing the day to day, um, uh, regular operations of the district plus the COVID operations of the district. And so, uh, you know, I I I'm curious to to know how, um, we balance the capacity of the the. The hardworking administrators and teachers in the district against the, um, aggressiveness of our ability to bring everybody back. I'm curious if if, you know, we're we're maybe reinstitute those working groups that we had this summer to to help facilitate that.
Yeah, that that's certainly something, you know, I'm, look, I I have no good answer to how to do it in a balanced way, uh, because there is none. Um, you know, and I I think that's the challenge is, you know, I think everyone is burnt out. But everyone in the world is burnt out too, and our kids are burnt out. So, you know. That that's, that's our biggest struggle right now. And I and I wish there was a good way to do this that didn't cause more work. For everyone to get it done, but that that's kind of where we're at and that's the pandemic. And unfortunately, it's the nature of schooling and. You know, even if we make this shift now and as we we work to do this, we're gonna do it again for the fall. Um, you know, so this shift is coming at some point. It's a matter of when, um, so. You know, there's no good answer. I do think, you know, some form of the planning groups, um, you know, I'll be honest. Uh, you know, we don't have the kind of time that we had before for large groups to mull over. Big decisions, you know, the bigger the group, the longer the decision. And and, you know, the smaller the group, the less input that you can have. So, you know, you need the right size group so that you get good input, but you have to be careful too because. You know, you can't put a process into place that then, you know, takes twelve to fifteen weeks because, you know, we. Thankfully be in summer, but but too late for this.
Um, I'm gonna keep calling on people, but if you already spoke and your hand is still up, will you put it down? Because it's hard to tell who might have another question. Thanks. Yaman?
Well, I thought I'd kill before me.
Uh, sorry, I can't tell who puts their their hands up first. I'm not the way it generally puts it in order on my screen and you're to the left. Which shows me that it was first, so.
Okay, maybe I can go first then. Okay. Uh, so it's a kind of just, uh, I totally agree. Uh, I like a try, uh, get, I like the idea of getting kids. Back to the school as soon as possible. I don't really like the kids spend a pretty much whole day on the screen. Uh, that's a really, uh, not a, not a good idea. But on that, on the other hand, it's a, uh, really on the, it's a contingent contingent on the, uh, what John said, a perception of the safety. Uh, really low risk, uh, uh, so what John mentioned about the Columbia, the data forty five. Pe- percent of the people in Massachusetts already have the positive, uh. I see, so positive, uh, rate. So that's gonna be, I mean, I don't know how to deal with that for the. So, uh, Dawn mentioned that if, uh, if kids, so the whole pool has a positive, then everybody get tested. Now, if everybody's got cleared, then the kids will be back to the school, but, uh. But if the kids is already, uh, positive, like every mention, right? And gonna be stay there, then what will, do we have that plan for that? Lot of students will be, say, forty five percent of the student is, uh, uh, positive. But I assume there's no symptom.
So the initial research on, um, the pooled testing in a variety of districts. Um, not just in Massachusetts, but in other places across the country are showing that there's about a one percent positivity rate. With the pooled testing samples. So we're not anticipating that we would pick up four to five percent. Um, and depending on when the results would come in, we would plan to test on a Monday or Tuesday. Um, get the results back Tuesday and Wednesday and be, you know, working through that process with. Um, our nurses and other staff to, um, get people in to do some sort of a drive through. Um, you know, rapid test sort of a clinic. Um, if it happens since the results come in and kids are in school, that's why we have medical waiting rooms, um, and we have backup plans in place for that. So. I think, I think we'd be okay.
So that that's three hundred thousand dollars is based on the assumption we, uh, we will have a one percent of the, uh, positive rate.
Yes.
Yeah. And, well, yeah, correct. And Yavin, the other piece, I think, um, if you have tested positive, I believe you're ineligible. For pooled testing for about nine weeks.
It's actually ninety days, um, if you've been positive. And if you're vaccinated, we wouldn't put you in the pool either. So the more, you know, the more people are vaccinated, the fewer people we have to test. So hopefully over time we can get that number down to fifty one hundred.
Well, those students, what do you put in the remote?
And no students in remote and no staff in remote.
Karen?
I, um, I I I realize that I'm a remote learning program parent, so I I'm not gonna stand in the way of anything here. However, I do, I just wanna elevate, um, uh, that, uh, at least, uh, as a former teacher. I I just wanna elevate the data from the teachers for a second and and I I would love, I I think that going aggressively. To get our students back is is a good strategy, um, and an urgent strategy. And I I hear that urgency and I. And I honor that. Um, I I wonder if there could be a way, uh, you know, even if we can kind of. Get somewhere between the aggressive and the moderate, so that way we we know that a lot of teachers are going to get that first shot. Um, and I I also would just like remind, they'd like to remind us that this time period is also going to be in the. The end of the aggressive part of winter into that like long, wet, rainy, still cold part of the year. So we're gonna have less opportunities for kids, um, to be outside for classrooms or to do extra recess or to. You know, just do the the extra things where we could, um, finagle the space. Um, so even if we we have this aggressive timeline and the moderate timeline, you know, the further that we nudge this a little bit. Um, means more opportunities for kids to be, you know, out, out. And it also means, uh, uh, more opportunities for teachers to be vaccinated. Um, and I know I would certainly feel better if I knew that more teachers at least got that first shot. Um, had that a good opportunity to get that first shot. So I I see the aggressive and I hear the earnest, uh, the urgency and I honor it. Um, but I also wanna just honor the safety of our teachers and their concerns and that data that they showed us. Um, so I'm just gonna say that.
Nora?
Um, thank you for the, uh, for the presentation and I'm definitely one that airs on the side of bringing students back into the building. As soon as possible. Guess the thing that I'm struggling with is. Um, you gave a lot of information about parent perceptions of safety under different scenarios. And I'm just having a really hard time knowing how much to really value or weigh that information. Um, you know, as a parent myself, I would say my perception of how comfortable or uncomfortable I am changes. You know, daily, weekly, based on what's happening in science and what's happening with the vaccine and what's happening with vaccine rollout. And so I'm I'm wanting to, um, sort of put that parent perception of how comfortable or uncomfortable they are, sort of. In a place where we see that as a continuously changing variable and instead pay more attention to. The mental health of our students and their academic progress. And then real scientific information about safety, returning to school, whether it be vaccines or what information we have about spread happening in schools and. And I I'm not seeing that the current parent perception under, you know, sort of made up scenarios is is really very helpful. Um, but I would love to hear more information about what what experts are saying in terms of students' mental health. Academic progress and and how safe it is to bring people back into the building, um, with three feet of distance. And then I think sharing that information in your decision with parents will create a different level of comfort and a different perception.
Yeah, and that's something, you know, I think we had hoped to be able to have for tonight, but it just wasn't quite ready. Um, so, you know, we are working on that with our medical team, um, to be able to provide that information. So, you know. Certainly as soon as that's ready, we wanna, you know, begin to socialize that. Uh, you know, I think. You know, just from our own data, looking at it, um, we have not, uh, and Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong, because you you know this better than I have. But we have not had one positive case from a close contact from in school.
No, we're actually looking at changing our parameters for after break for that to, um, bring kids back sooner. We're not seeing, we've seen zero in school spread. Um, we have seen spread through households mainly right now, um, and especially, um, um, hockey. Big time, lots and lots of spread, um, just because of rinks and what we know about the science there. Um, it's just a whole different, um. Environment and and the virus likes to live there. So, um, we're not seeing any, we've seen no in school spread. Um, at all. And 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 none of the kids that we've identified as close contacts through school have converted to positives later.
So, I Angie, I see that your hand is up and I'm going to call you, but what I was gonna say relates directly to what, um, what Don just said, which is. I really hope that in looking at how we bring all this back, one of the things that isn't in that slide is looking at. This maybe a little bit more creatively. I know that there are still a lot of special education students who maybe aren't our most severe. Severely impacted special education students that, you know, maybe our kids who have learning centers every day and maybe those learning centers are occurring. Asynchronously, but, um, anyone who has ever watched or listened to. A learning center with more than one student in it over Zoom knows that that is not an efficient or effective way to be helping kids. That need that extra help. So I just wonder if in addition to maybe. The first and second graders or the first and third, first through third graders, instead of looking at, you know, an entire elementary school building. Full of, um, full of students in fourth, fifth and sixth, if we've given any thought to maybe returning our youngest students and. The remainder of special education students who would benefit from having everyday learning centers. Um, and I I really hope we're gonna change our protocols around close contacts and quarantine because. You know, in the show, but, uh, I also have a student, Evelyn, who was quarantined this week because of a a close contact and it's very frustrating. Because the Nishoba Boards of Health were like, well, she's good to go, you know, as far as the state is concerned and and could have gone to school today. But our our protocols don't allow that. And so, um, it just, um, it it it's a frustrating thing. And I understand the conversations going on, but I I just hope that before we really are talking about bringing all of our kids back, that we're taking a close look at. You know, uh, we've, we've done everything, we've remained safe and, you know, it's good that we haven't had any contacts, but we've literally quarantined hundreds and hundreds and hundreds. Of students who have gone for weeks at a time with no academics, because there's nothing when they're quarantined. Um, you know, that that advisory as our, um, student rep told us is. Kind of a waste of time for many kids. And so that being the only way that you check in for two weeks is kind of nuts. So. Peter's already heard that from me, so, um, I I apologize, but I I do hope that we're gonna look at, um, bringing back a few of. Of our our kids, you know, or looking at being a little bit more creative about how we bring kids back, you know, without. Some of the other protocols, you know, going completely to three feet.
You know, our our biggest challenge in that regard has actually been transportation. Um, because we've had some kids that we really wanted to bring back, but they needed transportation and the state guidance was that it couldn't get more kids on the buses. So this will certainly help. And, you know, we we actually kind of anticipated this was coming, so we already have a small group of kids that. You know, are gonna be coming back almost imminently. Um, so, you know, that's certainly something we're gonna be looking at is, you know, how do we bring more of our. You know, higher needs population back.
Angie, thanks for waiting. I know your hand was up before I spoke, so I apologize. I I appreciate the the wait.
Um, so Peter, that the, uh, regardless which aggressive or the conservative in the planning. I will assume that we're still taking consideration because this is still a changing event, right? And if there's something happening in in the society, in, you know, in the, in the virus itself, and we still have a backup plan, right? That's for the backup, you know, something happened, then we will be able to bring the kids. Um, is there, is that, I'm trying to see whether we have that, taking that kind of like a backup emergen- emergency. Plan if something happens.
Can you give me an example of a scenario you're thinking about? I wanna make sure.
I know that the South Africa, the 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 different strain is coming and maybe. Now, maybe expanding coming to Massachusetts and with the current vaccine is not working as well. So, and we see something that's spreading and if, you know, I'm just saying, so we have some kind of backup plan if something like that happens.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I I think right now we're living the backup plan. Um, and, you know, the backup to the backup is we would have to close one or more schools if we started to see transmission of any kind. So I I actually think the backup plan we we've had and now we're looking at the better than the backup plan.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you. Oh, one more, sorry. Um, how about sports? Would there be any changes in with the stu-? Um, um, kind of, were we looking to some changes for the sports? Um, was this change?
Um, so sports are under the guidance of MIAA and DPH. Um, and the EEOC, which is something that I can't remember the words that go with that acronym. Um, but essentially, I think EEOC is partnering with DPH. They released like the required guidelines. And then MIAA, which is the Athletic Association, looks at that. They get the coaches together and they say, okay, how do we need to modify rules of sport to comply with that? Um, you know, I I, we had certainly, uh, you know, a bit of a challenge with hockey at the very end of the season here. Um. There there's some story behind that that I won't share from a student privacy perspective, but it it was not. necess- it really was not that our kids weren't adhering to guidelines, um, you know. And in all honesty, like our basketball team the other day was supposed to play another high school and, you know, they knew that. There had been a party at the high school and kids had attended and there was some spread of COVID. Our basketball team actually refused to take the court with them. So. Uh, you know, I have to say, our athletes and our coaches have done overall a spectacular, spectacular job. And a huge kudos to Steve Martin for all of his planning on that. But, uh, you know, I I. I'm, I wanna continue to give our athletes the opportunity, um, you know, just like we give our band kids the opportunity. I'm increasingly infuriated that the state, you know, is approving cheerleading, but will not allow singing. Um, cuz it it's the same thing without contact, um. You know, but evidently it's two different sides of DPH. But I I think we need to think about, you know, it's not just. Classes that engage kids, particularly as they get older. It it's all the other stuff around school. And when we talk about kids' mental health. It's as much about the other things they do in addition to just being able to go to class and in the school building.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, Nora and Jenny, I'm gonna let you talk, but now we are over where we are supposed to be. We're already supposed to be adjourned for our executive session and we still have to vote on the budget. So, quick, quick. Okay, Nora, go ahead. Sorry. Ginny, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanna, I wanna thank Peter for that statement because I think that's something that's underappreciated. The 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 things that engage older students are the extracurricular activities that they're missing. And the connections with their peers and the excitement and the, you you know, the love of. The passion of the extra things that they do. And I just wanna say with respect to, you know, aggressive versus moderate. Um, plans, you know, I'm, I'm, um. It, I'm, it's, I'm, you know, open to. You know, open to anything, but I just want to say that what drives me crazy is that this. This is a cost benefit analysis and we cannot. Not consider the cost to our students of remaining home. You know, in whatever situations they're in, three days a week. And, you know, getting to attend school only two days a week and having their activities limited. It's just. That is not without costs. There's cost to mental health, there is cost to education, there's cost to so many other things. So. I just want to say, we we need to consider that in the equation. It's ju- not just about. The safety of returning to school, it's the non-safety of not returning to school to our kids, whether they're seven-year-olds. Whether they're, you know, kids with IEPs, whether they're adolescents who are not connecting with their peers and the things that. Give meaning to their lives. So that has to be part of the consideration. I know that it is for you, Peter. But I just want to say it 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 just needs to be made explicit. Thank you.
All right, Nora, last one.
Jenny said what what I think I needed to say. I know that it's important to prioritize the young kids, the kindergarten to the second, third graders. In the work that I do, there is an incredible crisis amongst middle schoolers and adolescents in the mental health world. That is. Just, there aren't enough resources to help the students who are significantly suffering at being cut off from a time in their lives. When they want to be engaged and productive and connected and. I I would prioritize. High school students who are at the end of their high school career, who are looking to transition to college, who really feel the deep losses of this. And I know that that's not something we've created, it's something that we're trying to respond to, but there's an urgency and an exhaustion. That I hear from older students that is, I I can't say how concerning it is. And in the mental health field, there is not. There are not enough mental health hours to go around to help the students who are suffering. So that's why I say if we look at the science, it says there's not spread in schools, we have vaccines that are hopefully going to be rolled out that. You know, what we can do to safely bring kids back so we can have a return to some some mental health. That's what I would be in favor of.
Great. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for all those thoughtful comments. I mean, I I I know I'm I'm moving us along. This is an important topic. And it's important for everybody to weigh in because everyone's coming from different perspectives and. You know, as I encouraged, all kinds of people that were talking about running for school committee, everyone needs to bring something different to to the table of school committee. And that's not always education experience. So I think it is important to hear from everyone. So I appreciate all the comments. All right. Peter, you ready to move on to the budget?
I am. Me, uh, need to switch presentations here. And not have my computer freeze while I do it. Is Dave up on our panel yet? Oh, he is. Hi, Dave. All right. So. All right. So here we go. So this is our recommended budget and this is now version two. I'm gonna go through a number of these slides fairly quickly. Kind of get us to the the point that we need to talk about. But again, just presentation timeline. You know, we're coming up on March where you'll get the comprehensive budget presentation and then the final budget presentation. That is gonna be the eighteenth. And that is where we will do the public hearing that's legally required as well as the school committee vote on the final budget. All right, and that needs to happen along this timeline. All right, and just some guiding questions. Again, you know, it is about the balance of, you know, our students' needs post-pandemic. Along with the financial impact on of the budget on our communities. Just remember the couple levers that we talked about. We can either reduce the budget, which is expenses and or circuit breaker reserve. Or we can increase the use of other reserves such as E and D, transportation and capital. These were the identified budget adjustments that we made from the prior meeting. We had six budget adjustments that we proposed that told about five hundred and forty thousand dollars and another hundred and eighty thousand. By increasing E and D. We also had some other budget adjustments that were late breaking as of Monday, which feels like weeks ago. To the tune of about a hundred and ninety-three thousand to the good on the budget, so that was good news. And so the way we left it at the last meeting was the overall percent increase from last year was two point nine seven. And the act and assessment was going up three point two percent roughly and the Boxborough assessment was almost four point eight percent. And those, that was where we, I believe, left off last time. So, Dave, do you want me to talk through these or do you want to?
I can just do really quickly. The first three, Peter just recapped. We we brought them to your attention on Monday as very round numbers. HR and finance has refined those numbers and those are the to the dollar amounts and then and. There's a, there's a bit more savings as a result. Since then, also, we identified two other items. One was a. Capital item in the junior high budget request. It's not a CIP item. It's a, it's a capital outlay that we thought could either be deferred or possibly accelerated. But in either, in either event, removed from the FY twenty-two budget request. And there was a discussion involving SLT. And it was agreed at this point that we would defer the addition of the Certified Librarian at the Merriam Elementary. For a year. That was, that upgrade was in the budget plan and so. By deferring that, we save the the cost delta of moving to a certified position. So the budget adjustments now total two hundred and sixty-three thousand. One other adjustment that we, and we had a goal in mind based on what we heard on Monday. We've, we've put another hundred thousand dollars on the table for E and D usage. I use the word consider there. But it's, it'll, it's included in the numbers that you'll see. And so the total recommended FY twenty-two reserve usage. Is detailed there, including E and D usage of a million two forty-five.
You get to give the good news, Dave? Come on.
What?
I'm kidding, go ahead.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna say this chart should look familiar to you. We've, we've shown several iterations of it and. I think Peter would love to walk you through the far right column.
So with the proposed adjustments that we just made from the from the last meeting. That brings our budget increase down to two point nine percent. Note that the operating budget increase is two point six seven. And then there's some additional capital because we're resuming some of that capital plan. And then the act and assessment comes down under three percent, which was a number that we heard from you in the last meeting. To two point nine seven and Boxborough will be four point six four. And that's. Where we are. So, you know, that was our recommended budget. That would be, you know, after discussion. That would be something that we would, you know, be asking you to take a preliminary vote on. You know, there can still be changes after a preliminary vote. It doesn't lock you into a budget. It, I think, is more a signal of agreement with the general direction that we're headed in. Is that a fair assessment of that, Marie and Dave? I'll defer to you on the history of the.
Yeah, the way I've put it a- among ourselves is that the preliminary budget vote is essentially like the weather forecast. This is what we think it's gonna be, maybe. I will, I will say from my vantage point, it won't and and perhaps it can't be higher than this. It's, it's likely we still could find some refinements and reduce the request from here. But it's, it's more or less a signaling of of where we are. The town, as we learned today, is not as far along the budget process as we are. And so it's required of us, it it's required of the school committee in the regional agreement to take this. Preliminary vote, but it's by no means the final answer. You'll have that on March eighteenth.
Dave, one question though, when you say it's like a weather forecast, do you mean like a normal weather forecast or you mean one from this Tuesday?
Yeah, it's up to interpretation.
One from Tuesday.
All right. John, I'm only gonna let you speak if you're not gonna say anything about taxes.
What I was hoping you would let me.
Word tax. I'm gonna tell Peter to, tax rate, I'm gonna ask Peter to mute you.
I'll start screaming.
I would like to start talking about if it's okay with the permission of the chair. And the blessing of the superintendent is, I'd like to give the ALG report, which also provides a little bit of information about the timing and how the. The budgets are interacting to get us to a final budget.
I think that that's appropriate.
The Acton Leadership Group met this morning to review the sum revenues and expenses of the Acton-Boxborough Regional School District and the town of Acton. Based on current budget information. And as Peter just said, this is changing really quickly. Due to the delay of Acton Town meeting, the first presentation of the Acton Town budget to the Select Board will be on March first. So that's, so we have yet to see their first budget. The ALG has scheduled meetings on March fourth and March eleventh. With the objective of completing the ALG plan prior to the final school budget vote on the eighteenth of March. The current ALG spreadsheet shows a gap between revenues and expenses, which, after incorporating planned use of reserves, is approximately one million dollars. In the current spreadsheet, the Acton School Assessment increases by three point two one percent, including new debt. And I mentioned that just to say that's out of sync. With what we just looked, looked at. The gap between revenues and expenses must be closed either by reducing expenses or by increasing reserve use. ALG consensus is that there will be no operational override in FY twenty-two. There remains considerable uncertainty about the level of federal revenue that will flow to the town and school in FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two. If additional federal funding occurs, this will improve FY twenty-one financials and or FY twenty-two projections or both. However, there was no appetite for building budgets around hopes for federal revenue.
Thanks, John. Jenny?
Yeah, muted. Sorry, my hand was accidentally still. Oh, okay. Great. Okay, so.
Thanks, Tessa. Thanks, Peter, Dave, Marie, for for really honing the budget. I appreciate the the effort. And the number that we got to. I will say that, while I'm I'm happy we got to a number that's palatable. I am concerned about the extended use of E or the continued use of E and D or expanded use of E and D. I I think there are still lots of unknowns for next year and we're using, we're, we're, we're filling the. The gap, you know, we're reducing the assessment to the towns by using our our reserves. And I understand that that's what they're there for. But I almost feel like I'm John saying, it's hard to know if this is an adequate use of reserves. If we don't know what we're planning on putting back into reserves at the end of the year. It's almost like he was two weeks ahead of me in his thinking. So I'll give you that credit, John. But yeah, I mean, that's, that is my concern. We're, we're, we're dipping. More and more into our savings account to pay for our our bills are what could be considered operating expenses. Or one-time expenses and we have plenty of one-time expenses every year. And I'm just concerned that. We should, that that we should not make a habit of this because we've been in that position before. We've been in that position in both our reserves. Balance and and our capital projects. And so. Again, I I commend the landing the the aircraft, the ship, the plane on the aircraft carrier, as Dave says. But I'm just concerned about use of reserves.
Angie?
Adam Basic said it. I just want to echo that. I also have some concern on the reserve. Thank you.
That's certainly something we can consider, but as we listened to the committee last time. It seemed like using additional reserves was more palatable than reducing positions. So that was kind of the balance that we we struck.
And so is it my understanding that if we were to look at. If, for instance, if Boxborough had a desire for their number to come under four percent. What kind of, I I, as many times as you have explained it to me, in the way that the the budget reduces the assessment, it's way too hard for me. To like do that mental math in my head as to what kind of a cut that would be and what that might reflect, Dave.
So I'm, I'm gonna try and do it in my head. So we had, when we last met, we talked, when we last met. And the Acton Assessment was three point two one, the Boxborough Assessment was four point seven eight. The latest iteration got the Boxborough Assessment to four point six four. That is a reduction of fourteen hundredths with sixty-four hundredths to go. That's about four to five more reductions of the same amount as what we've just put on the table. Which is about. A hundred and seventy thousand. So a hundred and seventy and and the seventy thousand was budget and the hundred thousand was reserved. So a hundred and seventy times four more is about seven hundred thousand more of reductions. To affect enough of an impact on Boxborough to get under four percent. That's as high level as as I can do it, but I'm just.
That's what I was asking and that answers the question because we've already talked about what a two hundred thousand dollar reduction in terms of. You know, just reducing the budget means. That seven hundred thousand is significant. That would be a lot of staff. If, I mean, we, we, we're not gonna use seven hundred thousand in additional E and D, so. Okay, no, that's high level enough. Thank you. Does anyone else have a question or a comment? Are we ready to move to do a preliminary vote? Yevan?
Thank you, Tessa. I just wanted, do we have any lower bound on the on the E and D? So I I just get to know we have upper bound, right? Three point, upper bound is five percent, right? So what what is the lower bound?
Zero. I mean, I mean, the lower boundary, as a practical matter, I guess, I guess it's late and I apologize. But I think you mean as far as a policy, Yevan?
Yeah, I would say just to to be prepared for user E and D probably in the, in the few, in the next few years, right? We're just not gonna, like Adam said, right? So avoid draining E and D.
There's, there's an ebb and flow to that. When I first got here, the 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 district had. An E and D reserve of about a million dollars and it was, it was increased. On average, about a million dollars a year for a three-year period of time up to four million. It kind of plateaued for a year. And it's, and it's, it's declined a little bit each year. I think we've gone from four million to three six to three four. If we're using a million two and not replenishing a million two, it'll go down a little bit below, it'll go down more below three point four. There isn't, there isn't a hard and fast amount. You can't go below zero because you. Can't have a, run a deficit. It's, it's up to you. The policy is a target. The target, the the policy was developed. During a a really wonderfully robust economic time where we were, we were zeroing in on the upper limit. And I think we were, I think we were really optimistic that, hey, we're, we just, we've come off. Three or four straight years of of putting away a million dollars more into reserves. We've gotta, we've gotta establish a target so we can keep it there. Well, economics caught up. The health insurance rates aren't going down like they did a couple of years ago and and other factors and we're in a more. Normal municipal school district budget cycle.
Okay, thank you.
John?
I just wanted to speak to the the issue of, you know. I, I just wanted to speak to the, the issue of, you know, what happens if you, um, try and reduce the budget with reserves versus what happens if you reduce the core budget? You know, if you reduce the, eh, the budget with reserves, um, that sets you up for exactly the same problem, only worse in the following year. Uh, because as Dave has explained many times, you know, if you reduce the base, then the growth rate applies to the new, smaller base. Um, so, you know, if you look at where we are, and I, obviously we could have different ideas exactly about how much reserve use you wanna have. Um, i- i- it really does, you know, and from my view, if I look at FY twenty-three and say, you know, I see this as looking challenging just like this. Getting the base down somewhat this year will position us for, you know, eh, a little bit easier discussion next year.
Adam?
Yeah, I, I actually have a question, uh, more for the committee, which is if Peter and, and Dave and Marie go back and sharpen their pencils and cut more, find more savings. Do we want those savings to go to the bottom line of the budget, or do we want those savings to, um, offset the use of E and D? And, and keep our, essentially our assessments where they're at? Um, because what I hear Peter and Dave saying is there's still a little bit more work to do. Um, and what John is saying is reduce the budget. Don't use, and, and continue to use the E and D, lower the bottom line. And what I'm saying, or, and, and maybe what our communities and our FinComs are saying are reduce the assessment. But I, I'm curious, do we want to take those savings and apply them to our use of reserves or, um, reduce the assessment more?
Dave?
So just real quickly, if you remember from Peter's presentation on Monday, there's a difference between a budget cut and an increase in reserve use, both of them impact the assessment. And so if the budget is cut, but the, but the reserve, but that budget cut is used to put money back in the reserve. If those two wash each other out as, as it relates to the assessment. With that preface, I will say that's a, what Adam just said is a really excellent question as far as getting us direction on where to take the budget from here.
So I guess the question is, do, do people want them to, to take another look and say, you know, are there additional cuts that can be made? You know, like, uh, you know, like an upgrade to a librarian or, you know, um. I mean, does, does anyone have, we, we've asked a lot of really good questions that are, that are guiding things. And I do think some of the back and forth about the E and D is a little over here. So I guess the question is, um, do, how, how does the committee feel about, about making additional cuts? Angie?
What is, what is the, uh, E and D with this current proposal? What is the percentage now?
The percentage going into this year is.
No, I mean, with this proposal.
I think it's three point six, it, it, it's the percentage is based on the year-end number, or more specifically, the, the July first number. So to get, to answer the question, we'd need to agree on what the turnback's going to be. And, and I think that gets, that gets into a, a whole other realm of discussion that, that we really don't want. If we replenish with the amount of usage, we'll have about the same percentage as last year. Plus or minus Department of Revenue adjustments when they do the, um, a broken record, when they do the certification of the E and D. Um, so you can't, you ca- if you look at it alone, this brings us down to about two and a half percent. But it's going to come back up to the extent we replenish it. And it's at that point, after the repla-, after the year is closed, that we know what the next certified E and D number will be. Cer- certified E and D is always in the rearview mirror. It's certified as of July first of the year that you use mu- E and D to, to fund a budget.
John?
Um, and so I think, eh, you know, Adam, you know, stated my position correctly, but I just wanted to reiterate it so that there was no doubt that, yes, I would like to see expenses be reduced and have that turn into reduced assessments to the towns. And then I also just wanted to comment that for anybody who's trying to do the easy math on the change in E and D. With the budget set at almost exactly one hundred million dollars, one million dollars use of E and D will shift the balance one percent from whatever it is. And so of course, that one point two four five billion would shift it, assuming of course that there was no turnback by one point two four five percent.
Thanks, John. Um, Kira?
I just wanna recognize that Christine Russell has her hand up and, and I, I, I don't know whether or not you'd like to recognize her. But she might have something to add to all of this.
All right, I can't see that there's a, a person raising their hand unless I pull up the participants. And that would be absolutely fine, if you wanna allow her to speak, Peter.
Hey, can you hear me? Yep. Okay, for the record, I may have put my hand up by accident. However, I will say that, um, I feel really good about your budget process and what we're hearing. Um, as the FinCom member, I feel like you've done what we've asked to satisfy our goals and our ability to pay. Um, and as maybe, I can't speak on behalf of the entire FinCom, so as a parent, real quick. I would, um, think that reinvesting any other savings you might find in our schools and our children's and all of what you're doing to support your efforts would be my position, my dual position, so thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks, Christine. Um, all right, Adam?
I'd like to make a motion.
Super.
I move that the total appropriation for the Acton Boxborough Regional School District operating budget for the fiscal year of July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two be preliminarily set at ninety-nine million, seven hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars.
Second, second.
Not done, not done. You have not read this whole motion. I'm just getting warmed up here, so this is an increase of two point nine percent. And that the budget would be funded by member towns to be preliminarily assessed in accordance with the educational reform law and the terms of the regional agreement and amendments thereto as follows, Acton. No, I'm not done yet.
Hey, go ahead, go ahead.
Acton, sixty-seven million, five hundred thirty-four, eight hundred eighteen dollars, an increase of two point nine seven percent. And Boxborough, twelve million, six hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred ninety dollars, an increase of four point six four percent. Offset by use of E and D reserve in the amount of one million, two hundred forty-five thousand dollars. With the remainder accounted for by other sources of revenues to be detailed in the final budget vote.
Now.
Go ahead.
No.
Second. Okay, is there any additional discussion? I would just note that, um, as a Boxborough member, I think it would be appreciated in our, in your work going forward if there are other, uh, small adjustments such as we found by not, um, not doing the Merriam uh, librarian upgrade this year, if there's other things that may not directly impact. Obviously, that will impact programming of students, I'm not suggesting that it doesn't, but, um, you know, not in this. So if there are additional adjustments like that, I think that bringing Boxborough's assessment down would be appreciated. And now we'll vote, Adam?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Yevan?
No.
John?
Yes, with gratitude to Jenny for sniping the second.
Kira?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, thank you, everyone. Um, all right. Uh, Peter, the Edco collaborative update? Or terminate?
So be a relatively quick update, um, so obviously, your last meeting on Monday. Um, you voted to request the Edco collaborative to consider initiate termination proceedings. Um, you know, that was a publicly posted vote on our packet. Um, I also sent that same information to Edco, uh, ahead of your vote, so they had posted in anticipation of, of your vote. Uh, we held a meeting, uh, the Board of Directors this past Wednesday. Um, and the Board of Directors of Edco considered the request that, that we submitted. Um, and ultimately voted unanimously to proceed with termination of the organization. Um, it was an emotional vote for a lot of people, we had a number of people who had been, you know, on the board for, you know, ten, fifteen or, you know, some even involved with Edco for thirty years. Um, so it, it really is a sad ending, um, to the collaborative, but the board did vote unanimously to proceed with termination. Um, at this point, the next step in the termination process for Edco is that each school committee of all the member districts needs to vote to, um, terminate the organization. Effective June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty-two, so, you know, another year out from now. Um, and a majority of the member districts need to vote in the affirmative. So we now have to basically just do a shortened version of the same vote, um, that you took on Monday for procedural purposes. So the motion is in your packet, um, as described, but it's just, it's a very simple motion, move to terminate the Edco collaborative as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And that is from the Edco attorney provided that to us.
Adam?
I move to terminate the Edco collaborative as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Any other dis- discussion? Super, Adam?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Uh, Angie?
Yes.
Yevan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kira?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.
Myself, yes, I don't think I missed anybody, right? Everyone keeps moving around, my screen's like this, everyone moves, okay, yep, then that, it passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. I don't have Subcommittee Member Reports listed, John, I know I put off your things last time. Is there anything that is absolutely pressing that I know that, that policy hasn't met, Diane said that's not happening till tomorrow, I think, yes, John?
Um, yeah, I just lost the line. We, we've talked about the Health Insurance Trust, so I think I'll skip over that. Eh, I, I will say though, that all of the Health Insurance Trust documents are on DocuShare, so anybody who wants to go through all the details. It's all there, if you can't find the link, just send me an email. But on behalf of the Ca- Capital Subcommittee, um, the Capital Subcommittee met February third to review the work of JD Head and Dave Rinalino to develop the capital budget for FY twenty-two. JD and Dave recommended an appropriation of three hundred fifty thousand dollars with a hundred and fifty thousand dollars drawn from the Capital Stabilization Fund. The appropriation for FY twenty-two includes bond service of approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. Thus, the net appropriation is about one point one million dollars. Additional appropriations from the stabilization fund were proposed for FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four. Re- replenishment of the stabilization fund, uh, to the one million dollar level was proposed for FY twenty-six. The Subcommittee had two primary concerns. First, maintaining a year-to-year level of capital projects consistent with the thirteen-year plan. Second, maintaining the capitaliza- capital stabilization fund and capital budget at levels that anticipate significant known future expenses. For example, the Parker Damon Roof and the Conan School. The Subcommittee supports the FY twenty-two recommendation while noting that increases to the capital budget of approximately two hundred thousand dollars per year will be needed over the next few years. Additionally, the Subcommittee strongly recommends that in any year with a net turnback to E and D. The school committee consider additional contributions to the capital stabilization fund.
Right, thanks. Um, is there anything in the FYI, Peter, before we adjourn for executive session?
Um, you know, QPR training is the big one, and, you know, again, more information about electrons.
And I guess I would also note that in terms of the, um, that, in terms of the fire that occurred in Boxborough last night that the UCC in Boxborough, um, has set up a donation hub page, which I believe um, can be found on their Facebook page, I know that, um, it's been shared widely, maybe by the Boxborough Police Department as well. Um, all the Boxborough pages, I think, have shared that, so if people are looking for that, or, or you can reach out and I'll connect you. Um, all right, so we have need for an executive session that was added to the agenda tonight pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, Purpose Three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Acton Boxborough Education Association, ABEA. Because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Great, okay, so you were all sent a link?
We have to take a vote, don't we?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'm here for you.
I'm saying it first before we leave, because you were all sent to link, um, a separate link that Peter sent to the executive session. So, Adam?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Yevan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kira?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Nora?
Yes.